In October, the board asked us to hold the fee for volunteer background checks at $25 through the end of the year while we went out into the community to seek a sponsor. And that if we did not have a sponsor in place by the end of the year, or beginning of next year, rather, the cost to the volunteer would go down to zero and the district would use district funding to cover those costs. So as that deadline approaches, January 1st, I felt compelled to come to you and tell you where we are, what we've been doing, and share with you the package that we've worked to create and that we're shopping in the community. So Jeanette has, Jeanette and I worked on the package together, but she's really been shopping it in the community on a day-to-day basis and getting feedback, so I'm gonna let her update you on that effort. Okay?
So as Rachel mentioned, we have been working really hard for a potential sponsor or sponsors, and there is interest, but we have no firm commitment at this time, so there's a lot of interest, but nothing firm. We're also working with Susan Copeland at the Polk Education Foundation, and she is connecting with her potential donors to see if there's any interest there as well. And now that she's aware of our need, she's gonna look for some grant opportunities in her area for us. We also met with a local chamber who gave us great feedback as well. We shared the volunteer package, sponsorship package with them, and they really liked it. They suggested putting in their adopt a school, so that way if a potential sponsor or business wants to adopt a school within their local area or schools within their area, that they could possibly do that. And they're also willing to share this opportunity with their business members, too. During this process, we've invested a lot of time, energy, and thought, and we will continue to do that as well. We've also are gonna put a donate option on our website, so that way if an individual or a business wants to make a donation, they're more than welcome to do that to our volunteer program. Once we get back from Thanksgiving break, we do have a meeting set up with Give Wealth Community Foundation, so we're gonna pursue opportunities with them. And then, one thing I did wanna keep everybody in mind, that if we do get a yes from a business or a donor, that we don't expect it to move, you know, super quick, only because they have to go back to their boards and go through their approval and their funding process, you know, in that manner. And then plus, this is an ongoing sponsorship and support, too, so it's a big investment that they'll be making as well.
Okay, so while we've been pursuing sponsorships, the cost of the volunteer background checks that the district plans to absorb has kept me up several nights. I just wanted to remind the board the numbers that we're talking about here, they're on the screen in front of you. I have for you the number of volunteers we processed, that means the number of volunteers who have actually had background checks done in each of the last five years, what their cost, what the cost was that they absorbed under the $25 fee, and what the cost that the district will absorb under the new $40 fee, and then I did the extra math for you of the difference, just so that, you know, everyone's on the same page that we're talking about, an expense that is, as of last year, in excess of $100,000. And so while we have, again, as Jeanette talked about, really invested tons of mental energy and time and going out into the community to develop that sponsorship package, we've also been just really looking at the data, which is a huge thing for a journalism major, let me just say that, okay? Lots of time and energy about ways that we could potentially mitigate the cost for the district. And I just wanted to present this in, out of good conscience, I wanted to make sure that I'd given you this information. So we looked at last school year, the number of newly approved volunteers, and I wanted to break it out for you, if not this year, at some point in the future, if the district were to ever consider a reimbursement-type system, what those costs would look at, what would look like. If you were to reimburse last year the employees or the volunteers who did at least 40 hours' worth of work, so a full week, your reimbursement would be just under $5,000. If you went all the way down to putting in at least one day of work, you're looking at a $23,000 reimbursement. You know, we, I'm presenting this to you simply as food for thought, something to keep in mind, because there are a lot of unknowns with this. We don't know how many people will become approved volunteers when it's free. We don't know if three, four, or five years down the road, if that might be unsustainable for the district, so I wanted this to be brought before you. And we also know that as we've been out talking to the business community, we've gotten questions along the lines of, well, what am I really paying for? What kind of ROI am I actually going to see on the money? And we feel like as we are sharing data of this level to the business community, I wanted to make sure that I'd reported it up to you all, so that you had a more complete picture of the number of hours that are being put in versus the number of volunteer background checks we could potentially be paying for. So we did hear the board loud and clear, go find a sponsor, and that if not, you all would pick up the cost, but I felt, again, just as a steward of public funds, that I had to present to you this angle of the data, that there are, there were 2,591 volunteers last year who gave less than eight hours of service. And that's not to diminish two, three hours' worth of service. By all means, like, we welcome you in our schools, and we know just a small amount of time can make a huge difference, but this is a dollars-and-sits situation, and I wanted to at least put this on the table, so I felt like I had given you a complete picture. So that's all we had to say as our own date.
Questions? Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Ross.
Okay, in reviewing that in preparation for the meeting, my thought was, myself, for example, being a small business owner, I can't give $5,000 to cover. So my first thought was, where's my category? And I flipped, and I'm like, there's nothing under, that's a lot of money to give. And I know you're going back to the same well, so to speak, I understand that. And if you get somebody, that's great. But I, when we talked, I was thinking it would be something like, you know, can you, I don't know, be a star and pay for one person or two people or a hundred dollars? Something like that, a person in my position could possibly do, but I can't, I, so that's immediately where I went, because there's so many business people, I think, that are smaller business owners than that playing field, that might be able to do if there was another little packet of some sort, or, you know...
Right, well, that's the, this is a very quick, this is an evolving project, and so the addition of sponsoring a single school, that'll be added to our materials, as well as Jeanette mentioned, the donate button on the volunteer section of the website, so if someone, there are plenty of people, I believe, I would hope, that could pay the $40 and who would choose to just, even if they were just paying their cost, when they see that donate option, that would help offset it. So those were not included in your packets, because every day we're revisiting this and kinda refining it, so those are two options that will be added.
And thinking about it after we had our huge discussion here, I don't know that, I don't know, because I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I kinda went away with, if we could find one, then it would go to zero, but if not, nobody's complained at 25 all these years, why? You know, I would be open to it staying 25 if we're not finding that person or persons. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm not saying, January 1st, if you don't have a $50,000 donor to cover the half of it, I don't know, that's how I feel. I personally feel, we've been doing, charging 25 for forever, and I understand now that cost has gone up, so for me, it was, wow, how do I make this, continue to make this affordable, you know, for those that volunteer? Because we all know how important they are, and I applaud you for the hours and hours and hours, so...
And hours, no, I'm just kidding. But yeah, that's why I added that column there, I mean, so that's the difference. That's, so if you kept it at 25 instead of doing the 100 grand out of the district's pocket, it would be 37, so that is another option.
And then if you still keep that donate button, and you have that, you know, if I did one school and she did one, he, whatever, not saying, just in general, wow, and that number starts to slowly come down, or maybe the PTO or whatever can help with some of their volunteers to bridge that. I mean, there's so many different ways for it to be presented. I'm just really, I don't know that I want to take the plunge, if that's the right word, January 1st, I think, need to keep working...
Hold it at 25?
Yes, that's where I'm at.
And we'll absorb the 15.
Pardon me?
We would absorb the 15?
Yes, ma'am, to start with, until this kind of a program could get rolled out, maybe the goal is within a year to 18 months, we would have that complete 37, 8 covered.
With sponsorship.
With somehow, right, with different ones, maybe some smaller, middle, larger, just depends on who comes to the table, because I get fundraising, we go to the same people every time.
And it'll fluctuate, I mean, we could this year raise 37, next year 5.
Correct, 5, you just don't know, depending on who comes to the table. You bet, you bet. Because I'm thinking, am I wrong, now that we've done everybody, like, teacher, it's not every year, is it?
No, every five years.
Five years, so theoretically, that's, could be the worst, and then if we can get...
Yeah, we really don't.
Okay.
Right, there's, yes, that's what's kept me up at night.
Ms. Ross? Did Ms. Sellers?
I have several, I actually disagree with Lori, I want it to go to zero. I don't think we should be charging volunteers to come and help us, that's just kind of my philosophy. We spend thousands of dollars on curriculum for reading, but what better tool do we have than an adult sitting and reading with a child? This would be actually less expensive in the long run. But I do agree in the sense that if we could do, I love the adopt a school, if we could also maybe do adopt a classroom as a slightly lower level, that, because I think you do have small businesses that could do, they would rather see, you know, this is a $1,500 sponsorship and it's gonna go to Miss Smith's classroom in Wood Elementary versus just, I'm giving this money and I don't know where it's going to. So I would love to see some of the lower thing, lower level like that. Obviously, if we could find a $100,000 sponsor, that would be awesome, but I think, I think, that's, and I know you guys are, and I so appreciate the update. But yeah, I think some of the lower-level sponsorships would be helpful as well. You also mentioned about having the donate button online, is that incorporated in, because the volunteer application will now be online, is that correct? Is that in the volunteer application, where...
It'll be in the same area.
But not on the application?
Would there be a way to make it an optional question on the application?
Not at this time, through Raptor, but it could be coming, as they continue to do updates on their end.
Because I, I mean, I think people will, if they, if there's a little word that said, you know, this is how much it costs us every year, if you would like to offset the cost, it's $40, you know, give them the option to offset their own cost and maybe sponsor someone else as well. But if it's actually something that they have to answer yes or no, to finish the application, they have to answer yes or no, that that would be helpful, so.
I do, I think that's our goal, to have it there, but right now, until they continue to make updates on their end, they said it's coming, but we'll have the donate...
I was just curious if it was possible yet, but you obviously are one step ahead. So yeah, I greatly appreciate this update and all that you guys have done, because I know this has been a turnaround, but I do, I'm pretty firm in that I don't want our volunteers to have to pay to be on our campus. Sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I have one more. The hours, on the next slide, you have the hours, how are those hours, where do we get that information from? Is it if they log in on campus, is it...
Yeah, through Genesis, the former program that we used to have to manage.
So if they are chaperoning a field trip and don't check into office first, is that, that's not included in there?
If those hours don't get put back in, they're by the volunteer coordinator, they wouldn't get recorded.
They're never totally...
So that's probably less than...
There's way more.
I just would imagine that there's way more of our volunteers that are, because if they volunteer for one field trip, that's eight hours.
Yeah, we had that discussion, we just didn't have...
We just don't, I was just curious on if, how that worked, so, okay.
Thank you.
So, do we, because after we had said it was, don't we need to waive policy or set aside policy or not, if we're gonna be paying money? Because our policy right now says we will not pay for it, that's the worst question.
Yes, if you're, if you're going to do something that is contrary to your policy, you would need to take an action.
So do we need to do that tonight?
Whenever.
Should somebody put that on, or, so that we waive, we set aside the policy so that they are paying, because our policy says they can't pay? So we set, so the board can set aside policy at any time officially, we can set aside policy on this, because...
The policy is saying it would not be, it would be at no cost, does not, you had the first...
Said it would be at no cost to the district, and we're subsidizing it, you're breaking pol, our staff is breaking policy.
Wendy brought that last work session, but it hasn't been put, so that one would still, the previous policy's saying it's at the volunteer's cost withstand...
That was in December.
Yes. Until we forward it to the other.
Yeah.
Could that be added in December? The December board?
Well, or, well, you could do it in December, but we're already past, we're already paying...
Paying $15.
$15, and it breaks our policy, so we should set aside policy at some point officially until it's resolved.
Wendy, is Wendy, Wendy's back there about policy.
I'm sorry?
You're back there about the policy, because you want to give the update.
At the, at the last work session, I brought to you an updated policy that said that the background screening would be, would not be at the cost of the volunteer anymore, that is scheduled, because of notices, we cannot hear that finally until the December meeting at the earliest. So, I mean, that's the track that we're on in terms of changing, that would be the earliest that we would be able to finalize the change.
We're not currently paying, we haven't actually switched over to Raptor yet, because of all this, so we are not currently absorbing the 15. We're gonna do that in December.
So that you'll have that, you can do that at that, the new policy can be approved.
Yes, ma'am.
And the only other thing, if it ends up that we, the district is absorbing the cost for, I would highly recommend to have some sort, I, I too don't want them to pay, but just to keep a million people from signing up because it's free, that they pay and then be reimbursed at 16 hours or 24, you know, once they've put in some hours, if we can't get a sponsor, and if all of these other things, give them, and actually, you'll get better recorded data then, because there's a lot of volunteers that don't bother to sign in. Because if they're gonna get their $25 back after meeting a certain number of hours, if we're having to pay for it, or the district's having to pay for it, I would think about looking at, they pay it and get reimbursed after so many hours.
All righty, Ms. Fields, and then back to Ms. Ross.
This might have been answered before, but did we see what other school districts are doing that relates to this, and how they have it laid out? Do they pay for their volunteer, if they do, is there a minimum hour, hour requirement? I don't remember, it might have been answered, I don't know.
Honestly, it's all over the board.
Yeah, a lot of school districts are paying for it, and then if they have to do a fingerprinting or another level, an increased level, then they're, the volunteer applicant is paying for some of that.
Is there a minimum?
I haven't seen any, yeah, but I haven't dug into that research on minimum hours.
Right, Ms. Ross?
I would not support a reimbursement, but maybe if they're having to get, you know, if they're having to redo every five years, if you haven't volunteered 20 hours or whatever it is in the first five years, then we're not gonna pay for your, you to re-up five years from now. Does that make sense?
So if I volunteer, if I'm applying now, and I don't volunteer in five years, and I have to renew?
Then we would not pay for it. If you didn't volunteer at all...
In the five years.
In the five years, or if you didn't volunteer at least five hours a year, or whatever it is, then we shouldn't be paying again for, we're clearly not getting our return on investment. We shouldn't be paying for it again, but I don't necess, I mean, I think the people that truly struggle to pay for it aren't gonna be able to pay for it, whether they're gonna be reimbursed next week, or they're gonna be, it's, that's the issue, is that they are truly struggling to pay for, so, I wouldn't, I think it's still a barrier whether they're being reimbursed or not.
Mr. Wilson?
A couple thoughts, you know, in the fundraising business, as you know, adding a button will generate some small amount, but frankly, you have to go out and get it if you want folks to give to those issues, to those things, they may or may not. The second thought I have is this, we, as a board, probably need to give some clear direction, especially since...
That would be great.
Especially since we, whatever we do, we're gonna have to vote on in next month's meeting, so I'm not sure where we are, I'm hearing a lot of different things. How do we, how do we summarize that and up into a plan for Mrs. Pleasant to follow? Do we agree that we, that we don't want to charge volunteers, and if so, if they can't raise the money, will the district pick up those costs? Is that what I'm hearing? Ms. Ma'am?
I think that we're in agreement that we don't want the volunteers to pay, however, I don't think we have a clear understanding on a minimum amount of hours.
Well, and that can be something we look at in the future. My concern was just that $100,000, if that were to go up as people learn that it's free, if, if it becomes unsustainable, then that's something that we've explored, and maybe that's something we look at a year from now. Let's see how this went two years from now, maybe then you institute a reimbursement-type program, if it's something that we can't sustain, because that's 100 grand year after year.
I think at some point in time, it would be very helpful, and I know everybody's busy with other tasks, is to find out what other school districts that's similar to hours do that relates to minimum hours. I mean, I don't have a problem with us taking care of volunteers, but I think we need to be very mindful that if they only put it in hours, you know, should we pay?
Right. And 2,591 gave less than eight hours, so less than one day's worth of work. And not to diminish that, again, but that is a lot of money. We have not, I don't believe we found another district, honestly, that's doing a reimbursement. I mean, it's, it's hard to kinda point to any sort of consistency in other districts, because everybody's using different systems, doing different types of background checks, some are, a lot of them are absorbing it, but they're doing less stringent background checks. I don't believe we've found one that's doing a reimbursement, to be honest. So there may not be a lot of research for now.
What I propose is that we, is that we cover the additional, they continue to do the $25 as we explore this further, because I think we still have a lot of questions. I think we're all in agreement that we, the ultimate outcome is that we don't charge our volunteers anything, but we need to figure out a clear path to get there, I think, is that, is the board in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Would that still be bringing the policy to set to, where it's not required to change, charge them in December?
Yes, we still need a change in the, in December.
So what's the change in the policy gonna be that we report?
The policy currently says that the volunteer is required to pay it, so the change in policy just makes it where, it opens the door where they're not required to pay it.
So they have to pay a portion of it, is it counting?
Well, we're gonna continue what we're currently doing for now, which is the $25. The district will pick up the other, the difference.
So is there a need to change the policy?
Yeah, because the policy currently says that the district won't pay anything.
Won't pay anything, so the district is picking up the 15 while the volunteer's paying 25, you're leaving that the same, but you have to put in there, but the district is going to pick up the 15, there has to be any policy.
Okay.
I think Wendy's back there, and she, you're hearing the conversation.
Well, whatever the amount, it could be 16, it could be 18. It's gonna change, yeah.
But they won't pay the, right, until we figure this out.
The policy that she brought us just removes that language that requires the district to pay it, doesn't say anything about who will pay it.
Or how much.
Or how much.
So the 25, 15 is just our practice, that's not, that's not the policy.
Can I make a suggestion that we can, we believe that while they're working through getting the business partners, because I know it'll come back in February and March, that we continue, then we look at going to the end of the year with this matter here, that way we have back and forth each month. And maybe by then, we will have a clear answer from some of these business donors that might come up, so we can take it to the end of the year, and then hopefully, then, we can start off the new year with it etched in stone.
End of the school year.
Not the calendar year, sorry.
Yeah.
It's okay, school year.
And that would show the policy of our business.
It would go to...
So Wendy would take the policy for that.
I think we can reach that point.
Mr. Harris?
That would certainly fit in with most businesses setting up their annual budgets, because this late in the game, your 2019 budget as a businessperson is pretty much set in stone. Having us to enter the market in terms of trying to find companies that have the interest and the ability to help fund it, next calendar year, or next school year, probably would be a much easier sell than trying to do it here in the last four weeks of the calendar year, so your success is probably limited if you're hoping to do it this school year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy got all of that information, that's why. The next item that's coming before you will be Wendy Dodge with policy updates, that she's bringing. I believe she got the notes for what's coming in the future on the volunteer policy as well.
So we're gonna hold off to the end of the year, is that what I heard?
Well, you have to do the 15, but we're, you know, we're gonna cover the 15 until the end of the school year, and then we'll figure out the forward direction for the 19 school year, starting 19.
So we still need your policy?
Yes.
Okay.
How's everybody doing?
Great.
I have before you today just a few policies that, where the changes have been recommended by Niola. The first one, parental and family engagement in the school program, and the fourth one, toddler and services, both are just changes that are required under ESUP. The digital classrooms, which is the second one, we are completely deleting that policy, it is no longer a state-required plan. Physical education is updated to include the new state mandate for recess. Virtual instruction is being modified to align also with changes in statute regarding students eligibility for virtual instruction, and for who, for testing, where testing occurs and whether private and homeschool students are included. Interscholastic athletics is the same, those are statutory changes regarding participation by private and homeschool students. The same for student assessments, that's where they put the virtual instruction, testing instructions into that policy, and they also have made changes to the FSAA for students with disabilities. And then the last one is evaluation of instructional personnel, and again, those are statutory changes that we're required to make based on changes under 7069.
Ms. Sellers?
The one on the physical education for middle schools, is it listed in there that if they're in the remedial classes, they don't have to take PE every year?
I don't know about remedial classes, something.
The new policy has, for middle school, the new policy says they have to take a semester every year at middle school level, I believe that's how, did I misread it?
That's old language in terms of one semester per year PE, and then there are the waivers that the middle school students under...
So what's the new, like, isn't it one semester every year for middle school? Did I misread that one?
The only changes that we made in the policy was we added a paragraph about recess, and then we made a change to the organization that makes recommendations for our PE standards, and that was at the behest of the staff, so we didn't change anything regarding middle school.
Okay, so it's one semester except for the waivers.
Right.
Is there a waiver about the remedial classes in the policy? I didn't see it.
I don't remember there being one, but let me go through it real quickly, I'm gonna make it bigger, so I'm... I'll make it bigger, so I'm gonna... If I remember correctly, when we passed that statute, that was all about waivers for taking advanced courses and for, or for taking different, like, finance instead of physical education. I don't remember there being anything regarding remedial courses, but I just might, it was a long time ago, I might not be remembering.
Well, it's, it's a practice right now, and that's why I was questioning, is that-
Yeah. At the begin, at the bottom of the first page, it talks about notifying parents of the options to waive participa, participation, and option A is the student is enrolled or required to enroll in a remedial class.
Okay, that's, okay, I missed it. I just wanted to be sure it was in there.
No, that's good.
Ms. Fields?
Okay, I was looking on the physical education. What is our practice now for recess? I know that we've been doing recess for the last few years. And I'm, I'm just curious as to why we had not done this before. Does that make sense?
I'm late, I'm getting this updated. It was passed in 7069, and we just have a lot of policies up there, out there that need to be updated. So my understanding, when, when it was passed as state law, is we were already doing what was required in law.
So the practice is the same as what we have here?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then the other question I have is on virtual education. Is the policy that we are approving today a practice that we already have in place that relates to, in order for them to be able to participate, they have to take the, for the, the FSA? Because it says standardized testing.
I'm sorry, tell me where you're looking at the policy.
On the virtual education, I'm trying to find it.
Page two.
There's a statement that talks about, in order for the, a, a student to be able to participate in virtual education classes, they have to take the standardized test. Is that a practice that we already have in place?
Yes, ma'am, I'm familiar with Dr. Eggs, as I stare at him, but yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, I'm just, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Dodge, today?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that's coming before you, we have some job descriptions, Ms. Fordyce, we'll bring those, and I know Maria.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'll bring two job descriptions before you today. The first one is a after-school coordinator for the community schools partnership with United Way. That school is at Crystal Lake, or I'm sorry, that partnership is at Crystal Lake Elementary, and so it is completely funded by United Way. You'll see that the district is not on the hook for any funds associated with that position at all. And so we did reach out to Orange County and looked at other job descriptions of this nature, and our job description was in line with what other districts are doing.
Ms. Fields?
My question is, from United Way's funding purposes, is this an annual obligation or, or what?
From what I understand, it is an annual obligation as long as we have the community school partnership.
So will this position be required? I, I think I read it, but I just wanna make sure. The outcomes, it's currently required by other United Way agencies, this position will oversee those requirements? Do you understand it? Your outcomes, I'm sure, I remember reading it in the job description, something about outcomes, measurements.
Yes. The United Way and the organization governing the community schools will be monitoring those outcomes to ensure that they're meeting the criteria. And the discussion that I had with them in our last meeting was, they are, they are in, they're still discussing, because this is developing, and, and there may be some additional responsibilities, but I think our job description in there covers those pieces, so I believe that we're in good shape with that this time.
My, Ms. Fields, they're looking at, there are other agencies around the state that actually have those after-school programs on campuses, of schools that work in schools, such as community schools that, you know, through like a children's commission and different things of that type. So they're looking at some of the, we have a job description of those and monitoring, because really, what we're putting in fits that model as well. So they'll be monitoring and looking at that as well.
Well, I think it's good.
Yes, ma'am.
But United Way is willing to invest those dollars.
Yes, ma'am. Very excited about the project, Mary.
And the next position is a senior coordinator, Title I special programs. We're just changing some language in that position, in the custom job purpose, and in the essential functions, and in the requirements for the degree.
Any questions on that job description?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next coming before you is our master in-service plan. That comes before you, and I know Ms. Joe will. This is some, this, the master in-service component for you annually, and they're gonna walk you through some of the components, not everything that's in there, Dr. Eggs and Ms. Joe will, but this is something that comes before you, and she-
Good afternoon, everyone, superintendent. And I am here to present, each year, the Florida Department of Education requires that we get school board approval of all master in-service components that we get professional, that we offer professional learning for our students, for our staff. These MIP components are directly connected to what professional learning practices are, what we, what, how many points are given for each master in-service component. It also tracks how many points for certification of staff every five years. One of the new master in-service components is on the, on the last, is multisensory education is, which is part of the state statute for reading and dyslexia. And so that is our newest component on foundations for multisensory education. There is also a statutory requirement that the DOE is still working with as it regards to reading endorsement for our teachers and our regular district staff. We have components in every area, we track those components. We also, for college credits for every semester that someone goes to college, they get twenty, it equals twenty points. For each master in-service component, you can get up to a hundred and twenty points for each master in-service component. We do have endorsements as well that go as part of the master in-service components, such as reading endorsement, ESOL endorsement, gifted endorsement, sports coaching endorsements as well. We also have bankable points, such as our SWD. As you are aware, anyone that is getting an education certificate, no matter what area they are, they could be a school board member, they could be a district staff member, to recertify in every five years, they must have twenty points in the students with disability. On our master in-service plan, we code all components that have the SWD requirement by name, and we also put that within our master in-service plan. So if you're taking a course or a, a module, it is part of your master in-service plan and counts for students with disability points. And then upcoming in our new legislation, when, hopefully in 2025, will be part of the reading endorsement that is required for any teacher K-12 that teaches reading. The state has now outlined a different system for recording master in-service components, which we have submitted to the state, and it is our foundation leadership. It goes on to the planning, which is code one, the implementation, code two, the learning, code three, and code four is the evaluation of all professional learning modules and courses that we offer. With our new, the second attachment that you received was our Net Connect system. It is our new professional learning suite that's been in practice now for just about a year and a half. It's gone through a lot of growing pains, but it replaced our old platform, PDS scheduler. So now we have that. And for all retired administrators and staff, or others who have left the district and for whatever reasons, there are guest accounts that you can actually register and take courses and report those courses to keep your certificate active and going. Are there any questions that you have of me or Dr. Eggs about our master in-service?
Ms. Fields?
Just a good job.
Thank you, you're so happy. The next items, that concludes all of our discussion items today. And the next items we have before you, that you see the information items, we have Pope Education Foundation audit report, as well as with Pope Education Foundation, the offices and the board, and I see Susan's here, if there are any questions on those. Mr. Wilson?
Well, first of all, congratulations on a clean report.
Thank you.
My question is, do, could we get a copy of the management letter also?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jackie, I don't really have any, have any question, but Ms. Susan, thanks for you and your team for continuing to do a great job.
Thank you.
I remember years ago, when we struggled with that, and then after you became the director, we started seeing some changes here, so, great job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And he said, "Alvindale High School."
Brad.
Brad.
Title I high school.
There's one, any great high school. I'm going away, I love them all.
I'm working on it.
He's just proud of her.
Item eight is our investment report. If there are any questions on item eight, the investment report. And then you see item nine is our financial statements, which you see on each one, as well as item ten, our hit-star monthly report. Mr. Chair, that concludes all of my items for today.
Could we take a short break before we start on the school board, the board business? Right, to get started, please. So the next item on the agenda is a review of the- Right, to get started, please. Next item on the agenda is review of the agenda for this evening's board meeting. We have Madeline Pease from the university giving us our pledge. I think Bishop Bensy's gonna be delivering the vacation, I understand that. We have some special raking additions, and four sets of events. Any questions or comments about events? That's a new administrator, so we'll start with C-11 through C-15. Comments, questions from board members? Cash donations, item C-60 through C-31, and as always, we're very grateful to our business partners for all of the contributions. Any comments or questions? Item C-32 through C-36, these are non-cash contributions. Facilities and operations, C-37 through C-42. Questions, comments? Human resource recommendations, item C-43 through C-45. We have a, item P-46, is that, is there something added later, Adam Superintendent?
Yes, it's just, they wonder how are your resolutions rare for the prime staffers?
Okay. Are we, are we including that as part of the consent agenda, or no?
It should be on the consent.
Okay.
It is.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that that's part of the consent agenda.
Yes.
And we have out-of-state field trips, any questions, comments? Any questions about items R-47 through R-49? And we're gonna talk, of course, about superintendent contract in just a moment. Anything else? Any questions, comments about the agenda for this evening's school meeting? All right, so the next item on our agenda is a discussion of the superintendent's contract. Before we, before I open the floor to the board for discussion, I would kind of just like to walk through the process. First and foremost, of course, this was a, it was a discussion with superintendent, just wanna make that clear. It was a negotiation. We met a number of times to talk about it. I am recommending two specific changes to the superintendent's contract to my college on the board. One is an extension, a contract extension, and the second, of course, is a raise for the superintendent. So I'd like to give you just a little bit idea, and I'd like to share this with the public about how we got here. The first thing I did is I reviewed the superintendent's evaluation. As I looked through the evaluation, it was clear that the superintendent, across the board, with all board members, scored higher in every category than meets expectation. Now, I, I'm reluctant to use the word exceeds expectation, because that was a specific category, which meant that it was perfect, and it wasn't perfect, but the superintendent did indeed, I'm using this term loosely, exceed expectations in every category. Specifically, the superintendent scored a, an overall rating, go to my notes here, a 4.54 out of 5. That was the overall rating from the board. I, I found that to be outstanding and exceptional. In addition to that, on performance matters, which I think is, in my opinion, one of the most important factors of the evaluation, the superintendent scored almost perfect, 4.97 out of 5. So it was an excellent evaluation, a superlative evaluation, and so I started from that premise, and I asked myself, how do I tie this to a benchmark? So I went back and looked at what we gave in the way of a percentage increase to our high-performing teachers. Now, I understand that that's something that's, that had been assigned by the state, and it's somewhat arbitrary, but nevertheless, it was a benchmark, so I started with that and recommended an increase based on that. I then went back and looked at the information that Mrs. Cunningham had asked for, and it occurred to me that Mrs. Byrd was not getting an allowance for car, was not getting car allowance. And as I looked over those, what other folks were getting in the way of car allowance, it occurred to me that, you know, I just did some calculations based on my experience working in the tax law and stuff like that, that in many of the, in really, in every case, there was a component of that which was really a pay increase. And so I tried, I tried to pull that out and get a system, arbitrary calculation, and added that back in, it was about thirty-five hundred dollars. So that's where I came up with the $238,000, that's where the superintendent and I sit down and talked about, that's where we came up with that $238,000 recommendation for the superintendent's contract. I believe, based on the superintendent's evaluation, that a contract extension is in order, and I'm recommending a five-year contract, and that would mean that at the end of the current contract, the superintendent would have a five-year contract with the district. And to be clear, there, in the state of Florida, for superintendents as well as presidents of colleges, there's a limitation on the payout if, if a president or superintendent is not, if their contract, well, if they are asked to leave the district, for example, or colleges, by fee, and that's 20 weeks, and that's certainly true for superintendent Byrd as well. So the extended contract, and I'll- So the extended contract, and I'll, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Bridges is in here, if you'd like to elaborate on this, doesn't create additional financial consequences to the district. What it does is it sends a message that we're very pleased, as a board, with superintendent Byrd's performance, we would like for her to stay around and lead our district for many years to come. So that's where I came up with the numbers. Now, I will point out that we, and I offer this, I, it's one of the things I admire most about superintendent Byrd, she was very sensitive to the financial challenges that we face in our district. She was sensitive to the challenges we have in paying our teachers, our bus drivers, and our parents, and our other employees, and so we kept that in mind as we talked about these, as we went through this negotiation. And if you'll notice, even with, even at that range, superintendent Byrd is well below what other superintendents are being paid from other districts. So I think that's very sensitive to what's happening, and because it relates to the financial matters of our district. And finally, I'd like to say this, I, one of the things that I appreciate most about our superintendent is she sets standards, and she asks all of us to comply with those standards. And I know, as, you know, sometimes board members come in and there's something they don't like, and so they don't agree with that particular standard, but she's been terrific about sticking to her guns and making sure we're all treated fairly and we all meet those standards. So that's, that's how, that was kind of the process that I used in bringing these recommendations forward to my colleagues on the board. So with that, I'll open up the floor to discussion.
The information that we were given in terms of comparing superintendent's salaries in the market, and we got the top 10 in the state, and then Joanne provided us this morning a breakdown of the five other districts that are closest to us in size. You see on the spreadsheet that out of those six districts, including Pope, the current salary is the lowest of those, but if you look at the number of employees and the number of students enrolled, we are not, in any case, the lowest. Other districts that have fewer employees or fewer students enrolled pay higher salaries. If we look at the marketplace, which ranges from 280, 290,000 down to 230, it seems to me that the market is higher than what you're proposing.
Yes, sir.
And I would be comfortable with more of a market salary than staying under the market as we currently are. That's my thoughts.
Any other comments, Mrs. Cunningham?
I can see Mr. Harris's point. I do think you have taken a lot of time and effort, Mr. Wilson, to prepare the information that is presented here today. And so I am okay with what you have presented today. My question is, was this developed with you and Mr. Bridges and Ms. Byrd, or was this done independently to present today to all of us? And I know we haven't seen it, but has this been with discussions with Ms. Byrd, or not?
Yes, this is, the discussions were with superintendent Byrd. We, the discussions did not involve Mr. Bridges, because they were simply a contract extension and a increase.
Okay.
I did present the recommendations to Mr. Bridges, and I think he sent them out to all the board members a few weeks, a few days ago.
No.
Oh, you did not?
No. No, I prepared the, prepared the draft contract, but I didn't, had no, no.
So you got, see it till today. You got the draft contract with the recommended changes in it, but it was not just specifically tell you what changes were made, I guess. Is that correct?
No. No, I, I prepared the changes and sent the draft to you and to the superintendent.
Oh, we did not send.
And then, which is, which was my recollection of the, of the discussion, that I would prepare that, send it to you, to the superintendent, and to the, and to Joanne, so that it could be added to the.
Oh, and I apologize, that was an oversight on my part. I thought it had gone out to the entire board.
Okay, so this was discussed with Ms. Byrd, and pretty much agreed to that the salary level increase that you've presented here in the draft of the new contract is accepted. I guess that's really what I'm asking.
Yes, and certainly if Mrs. Byrd had disagreed with me and wanted something higher.
I would have brought that. I know that, I know.
So we did have this.
So I would personally support what's been presented here today. If it's been discussed with Ms. Byrd, I'm fine with that dollar amount.
Yes, ma'am.
I certainly agree with this, knowing that you are worth way more.
Yes, way more.
I think you're one of the best superintendents in the state, so, but I know that you're also sensitive to our district and our financial, so if you are happy, and this will keep you here, I am certainly pleased with the work.
Yes.
But you are worth more. I'm just sorry we, this district can't pay you like these other superintendents, but thank you.
Ms. Fields?
I think one of the things that at some point in time, and not today, we need to make sure that when we are doing evaluation of any of our staff, that we have conversation about their performance, and we didn't do that with Ms. Jackie's performance. We're doing it now. We didn't do it when it was given us, which is neither here nor there. And I think it is very important for everyone to understand that Ms. Jackie has really taken her, her job seriously, and has really followed the plan that we approved, and, and her team, and everyone that's, that has impacted us being able to excel in every area of performance. It's amazing to me that we've been able to see that. And I think that it's even more amazing that here we have Seminole County with 66,000 students, and their superintendent is making more than Ms. Jackie is currently making, for whatever that's worth. And so I think what is being proposed is very fair, and I think that it's a good start. I think we need to keep a watchful eye and make sure that we are in alignment. If we did with our beginning teacher salaries, we've been working on our bus driver salaries, you need to also keep this in the forefront of our mind, and make sure that we don't find ourselves lagging behind. And if we pay, if she's doing a great job, then she needs to be compensated. If she's not, then we discuss whether or not we want the superintendent to have her. But I am very much in support of this. What's being provided here is a negotiated salary between Ms. Jackie and the chair, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
I just, I will be supporting this as well. I think it, to go above what everyone else has kind of mentioned, the respect that our community has for you is incredible, and so just thank you for your, that's, you know, you can do a great job and get all the right numbers, but then to also be able to walk into any business or community function, everybody's truly excited that you're there and appreciates you and feels like a friend is something special, so, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Harris?
I'll support the proposal, but I still think, in the words Ms. Fields just said, we will still be behind the market, and we will be backpedaling, even if we raise this, which is a little over $10,000, we will still be below Seminole, because I understand, since this information was provided originally, that that superintendent has gotten an additional raise. So it's not the 230 that you see there. And so we will still be the lowest of these six, if not the second lowest. And I still think that because of that, it puts the community in a vulnerable position of not being a community that pays the market for its leaders.
Any other comments?
I, I guess my question would be, out of respect for Mr. Harris, we can only go about what we have here before us, and this is what we think to be the most current information. And if it's not, then we need to make sure that in the future, that the information that we have is current, and that we're comparing apples with apples, and not apples with oranges.
I do think this was information that was made available to us as being as current as possible. If it's changed, they did not communicate that to us.
Correct. This contract for manatee that I have is for the general, and so it was dated June 2018, when we did the original request, or when we did the request, this was a contract that they provided to us, and so if there's another contract out there, we are not aware.
Seminole.
I'm sorry, Seminole. I apologize. Oh, we like Seminole.
You know, this comparison was done by Mr. Harris. Well, he took the information from that. He took the information from that. Right. And put in the spreadsheet for us. And thank you, Father, for doing that.
Okay, so the Seminole contract was, it started July 1st of 2017, so they may have updated it, but this is the contract that they provided to us.
And I'd like to offer this, and just responding to something Mrs. Fields said, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but if I ever have an opportunity to serve as board chair again, I would offer to my colleagues on the board, if there's something you'd like to do, please just let Susan know, we'll put it on the agenda for you. I thought we did that, and I was satisfied that we did that, when a consultant, Dr. Freo, came forward and went over the evaluation. I thought that was our opportunity to talk about that, so you may have wanted to talk about it more.
It was, Mr. Wilson, because we got that on the day of the presentation.
Work session, sure.
And we didn't have time to read that. I read it at home at the, at the end of a long day.
Yeah, I understand.
So I think, you know, we just need to know that it's our responsibility as a board to have discussion, to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're all in agreement with Ms. Jackie's, or whoever is in that position's evaluation. And I don't think that we did that, but that's neither here nor there. I'm just saying for future purposes, and in addition to that, my opinion on this spreadsheet is that when we got this information, we should have had Pope counties as well, because we, personally, I had to sift through it to try to figure out how our superintendent's benefits and everything compare. So for whatever it's worth, when we're looking at that, and we start looking at Mr. Bridges and looking at Ms. Mathis, we need to make sure that we have all of the information before us for our district as well as others.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. And so the last item on our agenda is board members' comments. Yes, ma'am?
I am so, so excited, and I'm sure Ms. Usher is too, how hard we all worked for that half-cent sales tax. I can't tell you how our phones at the house and my cellphones and all were lighting up the night of the election to see, I mean, it wasn't even a, in my opinion, a small margin, it was a really solid one, and very exciting. So thanks to all those who took the time, number one, to vote, and who voted for the half-cent sales tax, so that our county can continue to do the wonderful things that it does to serve our students, and to provide the types of facilities, repairs, all of that, that's much needed. And it was exciting that pretty much everybody who touches the Pope County School Board was for it, no matter where we went and who we've talked to, and it's just been amazing how many people really understood that this was a continuation and how much it was needed. So I just want to say thank you to Ms. Usher for your time and talent, it is everybody, but, you know, it directly affects your department, and it just was just a great effort on everybody's part. So I'm just really thrilled that it passed, and I'm really excited to find out, hopefully maybe by the next work session, not the reord, but I mean the one in December, as to maybe what kind of priorities you might be putting on the list, because I'm getting a lot of calls.
Breaking your heart.
Yes, yes. We're looking, we're looking for some shovels in the ground, maybe, some, something, but anyways, when you get a chance, or as early as you can, if you could come back and let us know kind of what you're thinking and some timelines, because there's a lot of really excited Northeast Pope County constituents who would really like to know what your thoughts are, so.
In December.
In December, wonderful. Super, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Yes, ma'am. Any other comments? Yes.
I had, I sent a note to the superintendent last week about our open enrollment for academies. I think you said, Mr. Corcoran's here?
Corcoran.
But just that I had a parent who also works for, works in one of the academies approach me, because previously, they have been able to apply for more than one, to have a backup option if they don't get into their first choice, and this year that is no longer an option, which I had been told it was a glitch last year, but if someone could explain that to us and why we're not allowing them to have a backup plan?
We have both speed, and as you see, Tina's coming.
All right.
So I'm just going to kind of give you a little bit of a summary. So several years ago, there was an application written for parents and students to apply for academies online. That's one custom application. And then there was an application, don't know where the name came from, called Oscar, which workforce used for the academies. Originally, it was written for schools to approve the academies. So up until about five years ago, students would apply to various academies, there was no, it's not really a glitch, we didn't put anything to stop them from applying to multiple applications, because it was designed for every school to approve the application. About four to five years ago, we're not sure exactly when, workforce decided that we were going to approve that, do that process at the district, and it was no longer handled at the schools. They used the same application, we didn't change anything to do this, and so it was a bit cumbersome for them, because they had to go into every school and look at the applications, they could not see easily if students applied to multiple applications, but there was nothing in the system written to prevent them. So my guess is it became hard for them, and so we were asked to put on the website that you could only apply for one, but we never put the programming to stop them. So I'm not really sure, I think that was to help them with the managing the applications with the system. We have rewritten that application this year because of, we had to integrate with Focus, and what we did was we changed it for workforce, so that they could look at a student, pull up a student and see if they've applied multiple times, or look at a school by school. So we added a little bit of functionality, but we haven't changed anything in terms of the overall process of the system itself. Now, how they, how workforce chooses, that's, that's your process.
Looking back historically at the issue, they had always asked them to apply for just one academy. Now, that's with the caveat that there's another application period in the spring, so that if they don't get on the first choice, they have a second chance to apply again. Last year, I was told they did allow more than one application, but because the system is not exactly designed to manage more than one application, it was very cumbersome for the office, so they went back to one application now with one in the spring. However, going forward, we feel like we're going to be able to build a, one application form that's going to cover all of our application needs in Focus for next year. But right now, this year, there is only one application for an academy, and we will have another application period in the spring.
I, personally, I would, and the board may not agree with me on this, but I feel like by only allowing one application, it's kind of like telling a high school senior, you can only apply to one college, I hope you get into that one, and if you don't, you can try and apply.
Agree.
At the end of the school year. That's not okay to me. I would say we need to eat the, a little bit more cumbersome paperwork this year to allow our students to apply for a backup plan. I think we should be training our students that you need to have a backup plan, you may not get into the aerospace academy that everybody wants to go to, and so if that doesn't happen, that's okay, but what, what's the backup plan? I don't think that we can prepare our students if we're not telling them that now, as opposed to, I don't know, that's just kind of my.
What we'd like to say. What, what we'd like to see in the new application is a choice of three that prioritize.
Oh, absolutely. I a hundred percent agree with that. I just don't want, you know, obviously, we have more academies that are more popular than others. I don't want students to not get in, and then you don't know where you're going or what you're doing until summer, the very end of the school year, that I don't think that's the best way that we can prepare our students, to have a plan and get ahead of it and to be forward-thinking.
And I do want to make sure it's understood that this is, only applies to academies, not just choice schools.
Right.
Summerlin Academy and Harrison Arts, you can apply for those simultaneously, but, so it only applies to academies.
Which is, I mean, most of the, Summerlin and Harrison are kind of the anomalies.
So actually, we have five different applications, which is what we're related to in terms of trying to streamline. We have Career Academy, we have the Magnet Choice, we have IB, we have Multiple Pathways, which is primarily focused on real academy, but the intent was that it would cover all of multiple pathways, and we have the Controlled Open Enrollment. We have five different application processes, which is what we're looking at now to try to say, can we do one system? Because they all have to feed into the student information system, so we're really looking at, you know, does this make sense to have this much custom complexity, or can we find a solution, and we think we have a sol- we're, we're getting ready to look at something that we think may cover all of these.
Here's, here's the problem, if we go back to allowing more than one application, which the system, there are people who are already applying for more than one, even though we asked them not to. We don't know what, it's not designed, we don't know what, which one is the child's priority. So, he may want to apply for the Medical Academy of Platteau first, and Ag may be down on the list. Well, we're not going to know which one they really want to be in, we might place them in Ag. So, we don't have a priority system right now if they do apply, and we could end up putting kids in their fifth favorite academy.
I, I mean, I still think that we should be giving them the opportunity to apply for more as opposed to-
We are, if they don't get, if, if they don't get in, they can apply, then, if they're number one, they can apply again in the spring. So there is about, I do want to say, I agree with you, the, the system is not solid, but we're committed to making it a better system next year, a more effective system, and one that better serves the public.
Ms. Fields?
So currently, if, if a child has applied for more than one academy, do we not, and they get accepted to one, do we not send them a letter, or the parents a letter, letting them know?
A letter does go out.
Okay, all right. So then that could kind of offset, not that this far into the game, that needs to be something added. I don't know that it does. But if they didn't want to be in that academy and they had applied for another academy, they could choose to wait until they got what they wanted or just stay where they currently are, correct?
Well, that would add another step to the system, which they would have to be cleared by the school, and it would, would add complication to the process, but it, it could technically be done.
Okay, I'm just trying, I'm saying, please notify them by mail.
Yes, ma'am. Any, any other questions? Comments, Mr. Sellers?
On the spring, if they don't get in, on the spring application, would it be a possibility to have the first, second, third choice on the spring? Say if they didn't get in for their number one that they applied for?
We could, we could look at that.
That would be a compromise for this year, so that in the spring, they could do a first, second, and third, and then next year, and that would alleviate, and they would just, I know they're going to have to wait till the spring, but it's better than-
Right, I just, my biggest concern is that we tell every high school senior, you need to have a backup plan, but then when they're in fifth or eighth grade looking to go to middle or high school, we're telling them you can't have a backup plan, which doesn't seem to make much sense from our end.
But you could still go to your own school.
Right, but that's-
It's not like you're not going to get an education.
Right, but that's, but kids are a lot more likely to perform if they're in a program that they're interested in than if they're just going to math and science.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a compromise, are you, are you good with that compromise?
Yes.
Thank you. I just see your perspective.
All right, any other board comments?
Oh, I have a question, because I won't be here again to ask. A Winter Haven parent said that they're going to the, they weren't happy about it, but I assured them that they will be happy going to graduation at the RP Funding Center, but they said that they only get four tickets and they're going to be charged for other people, and is that what's going to happen this year? That's what they were very unhappy with, because they-
And I'll talk, and I'll let John talk a little bit more about it. Last year, I can tell you, RP Funding, believe it or not, we were maxed out.
Oh, I know. We all knew that.
We were putting chairs on the floor. So what's happened, they have to go through the micrometers one this year, and they're trying to limit, you know, making sure we get families in there by not having one family bring 50 people, and then they can't get, all the other kids can't get their families started, starting with tickets is what they're doing. And I'm, I wasn't sure the number yet, John.
Oh, we don't, I don't think the number's firm.
Okay.
Okay, they had a very diff- they said we get four tickets and then everybody else has to pay.
I wasn't, I don't, I don't know about that part.
I will, uh-
Yeah, I don't think that's right. That's right.
Well, I have not heard that, so I didn't know how to answer the question.
Because usually what, what, what happens is in some schools and probably done in other counties, if you get tickets and say, I may get 10, and then I may not need all 10. I can give you what I don't need.
Right, yeah.
And so we just have to see where we are with the, how many tickets they're getting, but it's only because we are really at the point of, we don't, I mean, it's-
No, I, I said a little bit, but I didn't know about the paying.
I don't, I don't know about that.
Okay.
But we haven't said that, because so I don't know who's taking the money.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
How you could, so.
John will be, right?
And the timer.
Timer, yes.
Timer.
But since Winter Haven hadn't been there yet, that, you have no idea how many-
I have no idea how many people are bringing-
And I will tell you, Winter Haven graduation last year, it was, I can't remember who was with me, it was all the, it was both sides of the stadium and all the way around the fence, like two to three people deep.
They may only get four if they counted.
Ms. Fields, did you have some?
I just, I was just going to say that it's not just Winter Haven, but I had a young man who came backstage, the girls ain't wanting to know if it was true, they weren't going to be given so many tickets, so it's out.
Okay.
So we really need to make sure that we get, get that answer and it needs to be clarified.
So we'll, what we'll do, board and chair, we'll give the information and we'll get that out.
That'd be great, so people can-
So they can, you know, won't them stock squash rumors if that's getting out there, we can let them know every time.
So the definitive is, no one's going to be paying for tickets to go to graduation?
No, we haven't said they're charging any of the tickets.
I think they were concerned with two things, paying and the number of tickets.
Yeah, right.
They didn't think that it was fair, a student, it was fair that they couldn't bring their family, have them in it would be, so I just think it needs to be clarified.
Okay. Any other board comments? Well, I have a comment about the half-cent sales tax. Sorry. No, no, thank you. Absolutely. Uh, yes, I don't normally dance, but I'm going to dance for you now.
No. You like some music?
Mary Ann, put your phone down.
I, I just like to thank all of the employees from the Polk County School District, because I know that all of our employees were out there spreading the word. If they weren't advocating for it, they were certainly educating the public, so we appreciate their efforts. I want to thank Mrs. Byrd, Mr. Bridges, Mr. Frayo, Mrs. Pledges, and Mrs. Usher, I know there were a lot of other folks, but again, the school district couldn't advocate, but could educate, and they just did an incredible, remarkable job of educating the public as to how those ones had been used and how we're going to use them in the future. Masterful job, so thank you all for your efforts. I want to thank the PEA, they were full partners in this, and they, I know they did a lot of things. They helped, they helped get signs out, they did, they made calls on behalf of the district, and so they were, they were right there, full, full partners with us on this effort. I want to send a special thank you to Ashley Traumman. Ashley is the chair of the Oversight Committee. He, he organized speaking groups, and again, the Oversight Committee couldn't advocate, they could educate, but they could take someone with them who could advocate after they educated. And he did a great job of organizing those, those speaking engagements. And finally, the Political Action Committee, and, and there were a lot of folks who were involved in that, but in particular Alice Hunt. Alice is a community activist, and she was out there engaging the community and especially engaging our business community. And, and then lastly, I'll, I'll just say that I put so many miles on my car, I think I'm going to have to trade it in by the end of the year. It was a great effort. I've been told by our consultant, I shouldn't say our consultant, by the PAC consultant that, and, and I haven't verified this, so don't hold me to it, but I've been told that we had the highest pass rate, percentage pass rate of any referendum in the state, so just a tremendous thank you to everyone who was involved in that, and to our community for understanding the importance of it to, to our district and voting for it. So, now I get to take a little time off. So thank you all for that. Except that, Mrs. Usher now has to go to work, her job's going to be a lot, a lot more busy now.
Starts in the center.
Yeah. We're looking forward to that. Ms. Capzelli, did you have a comment about that?
Well, we were very happy to have worked with you on the half of it, and we'd like to talk about a half-cent for salaries, which was passed in many counties as well.
Okay. Any other board comments? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. Please join us at 2:30. We celebrate Mr. Sellers and Mr. Harris.